Good morning, everybody. And welcome to our study session today. We're going to hear from Visit Spokane. And then we're going to hear about the point in time count. And then we're going to have a brief preview of council equity training. And then we're going to have potentially our last installment of the Housing Action Plan, depending how far we get. But to start, I would like to welcome Meg Winchester, and it looks like Jamie Rand, from Visit Spokane, who are just fabulous promoters of our city and really collaborative with so many business sectors here. And they're going to give us a retrospect of 2020 and what we have to look forward to 2021 and how they and the entire hospitality industry have been adjusting to the reality on the ground. Welcome, Meg and Jamie.
Thank you so much, Rand. Good. Okay, terrific. Thanks for the opportunity to present today. So appreciate it. As we know, this past year for our residents and our businesses and for Visit Spokane has been really hard, but we've worked really hard to support all. Just for reference, in March of 2020, we looked at forecasts and realized that tourism hospitality industry was being hit the hardest. We made the really difficult decision to lay off 19 of our team members and relearn our budget to eliminate any non-mission expenses. And during this time, we also formed a collaboration with GSI DSP, the Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the West Plains Chamber to begin to see where we could support one another and lift up our community with advocacy and information. One of the results of this was the ask to the county commissioners for marketing dollars, both internally to Spokane County and for a targeted outbound marketing campaign that spoke to Spokane's safety and amazing outdoor opportunities. Jamie is going to be presenting this in a few minutes. We were allocated to 2.5 million that Jamie did an amazing job of spending through the end of December to keep Spokane relevant in everyone's mind. We also looked at our antiquated membership model and reimagined it. We have now gone to a community-based membership model that is inclusive of all of our partners and will give support and marketing opportunities that many didn't have in the past. We also moved out of the Wells Fargo Building. We just want to give a real shout out to Jack Heath and Washington Trust. They were such great partners to us moving out of that. And we're now in the convention center. And what that's doing is creating a real synergy for us and also saving an awful lot of marketing dollars for us as well. And as tough as all this was, the future's starting to look brighter. With the adoption of increasing of the TPA from $2 to $4 starting in April, that's going to give us an additional sustained force funding source to continue with our marketing efforts. And I want to thank the city council so much for approving that. It's going to just make such a difference for us as we move forward. And we're also looking forward to watching trends and hope to have, well, I'm going to say hope, we are going to have a robust summer. Everyone's dreaming right now about traveling. And we have the perfect destination for those seeking a welcoming, safe, and a very getaway for vacation. And looking to 2022, we're positioned to really work toward our 2019 successes, believe it or not. As an example, in 2019, we had 17 conventions with over 500 peak room nights. And with the moves of the groups that we, that our sales team, convention center, and our hotel partners moved from '20 and '21, and some new bookings for 2022, we currently have 15 citywide conventions on the books with time to increase. So we're really excited about our convention calendar for 2022. And of course, with the podium coming online and the list of events that they've already booked and that are in the pipeline, we are looking bright as we move forward. I'm going to now turn it over to Jamie Rand to show you the exciting, fun stuff, as we always call it. And unless there's any questions for me now, we can wait to the end. Thank you, Brand.
Thank you, Meg. And welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, Brand. Thank you, Meg. I couldn't have said that better myself. So I'm getting a little bit in my computer. Okay. So today, I'm going to go over essentially what our strategy was and what we did on executing on the $2.5 million in CARES Act funding that was granted to Visit Spokane. So first of all, we'll start with just a summary of the results. The campaign is running through April of 2021. We do have, we still have billboards and the Seattle Transit buses and all that. All that creative is still running in Seattle and Portland through April and May. So I projected it out, but the digital stuff that we can track, we have spent. So of that, of the $2.5 million, we booked $5 million in hotel room revenue. Visit Spokane has attribution partners that we pay to help us be able to track transactions made from hotel, from consumers that see our ads that eventually book hotels. And so that allows us to get a transactional ROI on the county's investment. And so with the two to one return on advertising Spokane County, we fare much better than our competitive cities, and I will show you that data later. But to kind of sum it up, Spokane County had an occupancy rate double that of Seattle and had a higher revenue per available room, which is RevPAR, which is the fundamental metric that hoteliers use to measure profitability. And that was higher than Seattle and Portland in 2020. Two metrics that had not happened in decades, or if ever. And so very significant changes. So we had goals. Obviously, any campaign needs goals. The first and foremost was to encourage overnight spending, but we also wanted to promote activities that could be done safely. Safety was the key part of our message because we knew that with the amount of money we were given, we were also repositioning how Portland and Seattle viewed Spokane. And so we wanted to approach things cautiously. And then lastly, we wanted to develop a creative campaign that could get, that had life past the pandemic, right? And that took some creative problem solving, which I will share with you. So as I said before, the campaign started with as Ready to Rome and then moved to Room to Rome. We wanted visitors to book hotel rooms and explore Spokane, but it was imperative that safety was our message. So we used the Turtle as our mascot throughout the campaign. He was slow, steady, cautious, and realistically optimistic, we'll call him. And so we had a couple of creative imperatives, right? And we ended up going with these characters because they checked a lot of boxes for us. The first and foremost is that we didn't have to put people en masse. Putting people en masse is just not, is unappealing, but more importantly, it has no shelf life. It's not relevant once the pandemic's over, and we didn't want to waste the money. The illustrated animals leaned into the brand tagline created by nature, and they didn't entangle us in any unnecessary social or political criticisms. The animals also lend themselves the character of development and eventually brand development. And most importantly, like standing out comes with risk. We took a risk, but I felt like that was what was necessary to separate Spokane from our competitive markets. And so the campaign was expressed in many different creative ways, from digital Google advertising to double truck print ads and, you know, regional travel publications, to the sound in Seattle Transit buses in the Seattle metro area, to billboards in Portland and I-90, and to social media. I mean, you name it, we did it. And so we also, during that time, needed to create videos. We ran a $650,000 out of the 250 million was spent on broadcast and OTT, which is like Hulu and apps that you would use on your phone. And so I'm not sure if everyone will be able to see this, but just for the fun of it, we will give it a try, just so the city council can see what the creative looks like or what everyone else is seeing about Spokane. And so that is one of four spots that was created as a result of this campaign. They got very positive reviews, which I can show you, feedback. But now, if we look at, okay, where are we at now? So all that was done in 2020. So golf has been a primary focus for the spring. Golf is a safe, structured outdoor sport that is an easy environment, which is social distance. I have, I have met personally with Cindy Window and some of the staff, city employees, about how to, to give them tools to help inform the golf marketing and to show them that we are supporting the efforts of our golf courses because we have built out some tools, data tools during the pandemic that basically has told us that the, that there is an enormous opportunity for the city and county golf courses in the Spokane area. And so this is some of the creative that is out there right now. These are the ads. If you were in downtown Seattle, you would see this bus driving by with our gator and Marv on top relaxing. He's not much of a golfer because of his arms, obviously. And so one of the things I'd like to point out to city council that I think is important is that we not only did, you know, the campaign and the money, the ads went outside the county, but the work was created inside the county. And so the locals were critical to the authenticity of this campaign. There was no chance that I would ever go use a creative agency from Portland or Seattle to do this work. It was important to me that we stayed local. And so I just wanted to share this as an overview. I'm not going to read everybody, but you can see some of the organizations all the way down to the individuals that, that we used, we spent the CARES Act money with to get done all the creative work. From artists to photographers, to creative directors, to talent agencies, you name it, even media partners, our friends at the Ellander, Jared, especially Jared, but Jared and Ted and the team at the Ellander were huge strategic partners. So I want to mention them, as well as the people at Power Marketing and C2. So we spent all this money locally, the campaigns, the strategy, all the, everything that was important was spent and done locally. And I'm extremely proud of that. I remember when we started it, Benji Way asked me, what is our goal here? And I said to him very directly that our goal is to prove to Portland and Seattle that we're a lot more than they give us credit for. And I think creatively, we accomplished that. And so all said and done, we put over a quarter of a billion ad impressions into Portland, Seattle, and the tri-cities over a very short, over about a six, seven month period of time, which is an incredible rate, especially at a time when nobody else was spending. Our ads didn't get us in trouble. They didn't, they didn't offend anybody. They made people happy, and they encouraged travel. And we have the information to back that up. And so this, what we're looking at is called the STAR report. The STAR report is an industry, a well-respected standard industry report that almost every hotel in the major metro areas report to, so they can also have the data. What the dotted line that you're looking at at the top is what Spokane County looked like in 2019. There's three solid lines. There's an orange one, which represents the occupancy in the valley. There's the blue one, which represents occupancy, hotel occupancy in 2020 for all hotels in the county. And then the solid purple one is just downtown. The dotted ones are competitive cities. The very, very low one is Seattle downtown. The higher green dotted one up here that competes with us for a little, a little bit, only for a little bit, we came back in December. I'd like to point that out, that we actually beat them in December, but that's not showing here. And so when you look at the occupancy for the valley and the county as a whole, we far outpaced our competitive cities. And even if you, if you do it apples to apples, like our downtown is the purple versus Seattle's downtown down here, it goes without saying. And I, and I say this with much respect for both of those cities, and I feel terrible about the situation that they're in, but I think it is worth noting that we have fared better than they have. There was a lot of proud moments in the campaign personally, but, but marketing is more than just about metrics. There's a feeling that you get from advertising. Advertising is intended to make you feel better. And so I can remember when we started, I just said, I wanted to prove them wrong, and I wanted to make people happy. And you can see that we did. My favorite compliment was from the Portland State Marketing Professor that asked if he could use our campaign to teach his students how strategic positioning works. And I said, of course, please teach all the Portland students about how wonderful Spokane is. And so moving forward, there's, we had a lot of plans. I was going to go into the whole Tableau dashboard and everything today. I would be happy to show anybody that at a separate time. And I guess what I'm saying is, we've built out a data tool that we are now going to provide as a member benefit that has 2019 and 2020 data that will give our local businesses. I have almost 500 points of interest, including 300 restaurants. By the time I'm done, by April, I'll have about 800 points of interest in almost every hospitality business in the county map. And I will be able to provide almost nothing to our local businesses so they can get some business intelligence to help them look at what 2019 looked like, what 2020 looked like, and what 2021 looks like, and hopefully get some insights, help the businesses be able to find a way out of this, is our goal, at least for the first quarter. Our new website will be launching April 1st, and we'll be rolling out a lot of these business intelligence tools as well. And again, I want to make sure that I'm clear that none of this could have been done without the partnerships of GSI, Ellander, the Spokane Valley Chamber. Like, the amount of effort and the collaboration that went into it and the cross collaboration, it was phenomenal. I've never been part of anything that I'm more proud of. So, thank you.
Awesome. Great. And I hope council members and staff can just get a little sense of the energy that comes out of Visit Spokane. I had the pleasure of serving on the board there for several years, and now Betsy Wilkerson is on it, but that is just indicative of the high level of professionalism and creativity. But does anyone have any questions or comments for the presenters? All right. Well, I'm not seeing. I found that very helpful. Thank you. And we're, I think everyone's pulling for an amazing 2021. We're well positioned compared to other places. So we'll let you go back to your, oh, your jobs, and we'll go on. We're going to move on to actually council equity training. The point, point in time count is rescheduled. They're doing a little more analysis, and I just hadn't caught up quite with my emails. So if you were getting excited for that today, I'm sorry. It's coming. But we are going to hear from Alex and perhaps some guests on upcoming council equity training. So Alex, take it away.
Well, good morning, Council President, council members. I think we had planned to go a little bit later, so I don't know if Hadley's going to be able to join us. We did send out the proposed equity training, or at least the outline, but I wanted to give us kind of a quick background.
You know what, Alex? Alex, I'm going to interview. If they're going to come later, I think we could probably just go to the Housing Action Plan, and then they should, so let's do that, since they were going to join us. Sorry about that. All right. Housing Action Plan. I see your faces, so I'm assuming you're ready to go a little sooner than we thought, but assuming Maran can take it away.
Yes. Moral of the story, be prepared at 11:00. Okay. So let me just, I am ready. I'm just going to pull up my presentation. So again, I'm Maran Murphy. I am a planner with the city, and I am going to continue our discussions today on the Housing Action Plan. And we've been having these the last couple weeks. So today, we're going to talk about the third strategy, and then hopefully we can get to the fourth one, but we'll see as we, as we get there. So, one second. This is my little dance, come with everything around. Okay. So again, the city's creating the Housing Action Plan to help increase housing options and support housing needs for more people and families of all incomes. And after these discussions, we'll go to hunker down for a bit and work on the draft plan and come back in the spring for more consideration. So again, just a reminder that these are high-level draft discussions, or discussions right now about the draft priorities and strategies. So as I said, we've been talking about the first and second strategy, sorry, the first and second priority, and you can use my own language, the last couple weeks. And so today, hoping to get through the third and possibly the fourth. And again, these have been identified through review of previous initiatives, analysis of our housing needs and data input and feedback we've received so far, and then our community surveys, as well as commerce guidance that they've provided for, for the development of a Housing Action Plan. So the third priority is, the first two priorities dealt a lot with housing supply, development regulations, and capacity for increasing housing development. And the next two will focus more on supporting programs and building partnerships. And so this one, last week, we talked about affordable housing, and this one today is going to drill down more specifically on homeownership. And then the fourth one, if we can get to that, will look at leveraging regional partnerships as we talk about housing initiatives. So just some data to start again. In our data analysis, we know that household incomes have not kept up with home sales prices, which has been certainly a big conversation that we've seen in the community over the last year. And this definitely impacts what households can afford and the options that are available to them on the market. And we know that in the last year, there has been even more pressure on the housing market, and Zillow's market analysis puts the last year alone at about an 18% increase on home sales prices. And so it's still considerably more than what the median household income is increasing as far as percentage. But the overall trend remains that home sales prices are increasing, and we see the pressures that this is placing on people that are looking to buy a home or move into homeownership or change their living conditions. So in our community survey, we asked about challenges experienced in finding a home, and we talked about this at a high level of all respondents. I wanted to pull out the challenges faced by respondents who are homeowners and then respondents who are renters and are interested in buying a home. So we did a little bit of some filtering by, by their responses and see some interesting differences, just to, as far as discussion. Many of the homeowner challenges speak to issues around market competition or finding specific amenities. And so they may already be, they're already in the housing market or recently entered the housing market. So they, they may be able to find a home that they can afford, but maybe not necessarily one that meets their needs. And then for respondents interested in buying a home, affordability continues to be the biggest challenge in addition, in addition to other challenges related to payments and monthly housing costs. And then also, finding a safe and quality home was higher among this group than current homeowners. And then we explored a little bit further and looked more specifically at respondents who are interested in buying a home, and then looked at their different income levels and what challenges they face at the different income levels. So lower-income renter households, again, struggle to find a home they can afford, which may keep them from even entering the housing market. And then we see that middle-income renters may find housing options, but again, struggle with having enough money for a down payment or experience that market competition. And so this suggests that, again, these are respondents that are interested in buying, again, may, may be challenged to enter the market or are challenged with financing or not enough options or facing market competition. And so when we think about policy outcomes and potential actions, and we think about housing for all incomes, this can help inform some of the potential actions that can help renters become homeowners. And then I also want to share data around the racial homeownership gap. I know that the council has talked about this a number of times, but just wanted to reference that in our conversation today. And their national data does show that the gap in homeownership rate between black households and white households in the U.S. is bigger today than even than it was following the 1968 Housing Act. And this is due to history of housing discrimination and policies, as well as communities of color were hit a lot harder by the housing crisis a decade ago and are still trying to recover from that. So nationally, the homeownership gap between black households and white households is around 30, 30-point difference, but in Spokane, it's closer to 40 points. And then you can see similar gaps with other households of color. And since homeownership remains the principal way that most families build wealth or pass on wealth, it's an important, an important equity issue that we want to address in this plan and are looking for ways that we can close that gap and promote homeownership for everyone. So our third priority, support pathways to equitable and attainable homeownership. This one, there's, we, there's not as many actions along with it, so that's why I put them all on one page instead of going one by one, but we can, we can talk through them and explore them as people would like. So the first one, and I guess just a point of note, that these are, as I said, more program-focused. A lot of these are managed by CHHS. And while these are not necessarily under the normal planning umbrella that the first two have really addressed with, we do want to acknowledge the work that CHHS is doing in order to help promote homeownership and expand homeownership. So the first one, highlighting and growing city programs. This is our single-family rehab program, essential home repair program, there are like housing programs. These are ones that we currently have, and so wanting to, again, highlight those, uplift those, and really focus on the work that our staff are currently doing and finding ways to expand the reach of that effort. Reducing barriers and expanding access to homeownership. We talked a little bit about, with CHHS staff, about streamlining navigation and processes, maybe providing more proactive counseling or education, or, you know, working with our partner organizations that are doing this work as well. We've also, I know council has talked a lot about shared equity ownership models, so trying to figure out how the city can support that, I think, has been a big discussion that we've been having internally with our project team, and certainly interested in hearing some thoughts from council on that. But we know that there's a lot of interest in the community with things like resident-owned communities or our community land trust. And so wanted to acknowledge that in here as well. And then also, one of the key factors of our, or the key components of the Housing Action Plan is looking at anti-displacement measures or ways to mitigate displacement. And so some ideas around that are continuing to focus efforts that overcome the impediments to fair housing. that overcome the impediments to fair housing ways. And also, we've heard from stakeholders about utilizing racial equity frameworks to inform policy and programs. And so that can help us proactively address displacement in, as we talk about housing policy, land use policy, things like that. So that is the third priority.
Council President.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Mom.
Maran, while you're on this stage, I'm real curious about 31, 32, and 33, and what you might know or what you might have heard about how cities are directly involved in that. Some of that seems really private, banking, mortgage industry. It's really a space the city's not been directly involved in before. What are you seeing out there that's working?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Mom. That's a great question. And actually, one that we've been having a lot of discussion about and why these, I think, are a little bit shorter. You know, the questions I've been asking as well as what is the city's role in that? And so you do see, you know, direct funding for some of these programs. You know, staff support, resources. Some cities will, you know, seed, put some seed money into startup of a land trust or programs like that. But you are pointing to that these are homeownership, things around homeownership with lending, mortgages. You know, that is typically beyond the purview of local government. But direct financial assistance, you know, staff support, helping navigate or helping access information, I think, are, are still roles that the city can have.
So if I may follow up.
We'd certainly welcome your feedback on it.
Well, I just, it, it's such a new space. So when you say staff support, is it that there's grants given to agencies that do, you know, credit assistance? Or are they directly going to financing of a, a certain type of housing for income qualification? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah. And we also came a little bit early. I'm not sure if someone from CHHS is on the, on the call. I can't see everybody. But I know that with, we get, the city gets federal grants, federal funds through CBDD and then use that to fund other programs. And then work in partnership with community organizations, either funding them directly to do work and grow outreach and assistance or, you know, work creatively to partner on funding. So that's, as much as I know, if someone from CHHS is on, I did reach out to Becky, you know, but I'm not sure if she was able to log in.
I can weigh in on.
Because I think it would be, if it's a, it's an implementation strategy, I'd love to see what other communities have done successfully. I think there's lots of good ideas, but I want to see some that actually, we know work. It's an investment.
I was just going to, this is Brian. I was just going to weigh in a couple of things. One, government was historically a mover behind restricting who could get mortgages based on race and where they could live in a city based on race. And so government has been in that space, unfortunately, on the, on the wrong side of history in that space. And so as government makes its way back, I think in Spokane, there's a couple of things. We did just fund a project for down payment assistance that has restrictions on resale until the down payment assistance is paid back. And so that's a Rose Evolving Fund. And I think also, we can, as a city, be a convener, bring the credit unions together and figure out how we can really bridge these historical gaps that were created by government policy and laws and now is just kind of baked into the system, even though the government has withdrawn those laws. But I, like you, I'm interested in what other cities are, are doing. I, I got to say, just seeing that number that 80% of African Americans are renters and 90% of Hawaiian Pacific Islanders are, that was, that was pretty stark. And sadly, our government had a, had a part to play in that historically. And so I'm hoping, one of the things I'm hoping to get is, from our new historic preservation specialist, is a report on how that played out in Spokane, so that we have some historical basis for what government did to create it, so that then government can come up potentially with remedies within the structure of laws that we're able to do. We do have a statewide law that makes it challenging to do race-based remediation, even if it's clear historical government that caused it. So I'm hoping that City Legal can help us out on that a bit. Other questions or comments on this section? I don't, I can't see everybody, so please volunteer if you're something you want to.
Council President.
Yeah, Councilmember Cathcart.
Hey, Maran, thank you very much for all the information yet again. For me, I think two, two areas that I have a strong interest in, especially with homeownership, are families who have experienced generational poverty, as well as communities of color that were, you know, connected with redlining, you know, way, way back. And so I think, or I would love to see more data on generational poverty if it exists. I don't know if we have anything like that, but I'd love to see that if possible. And then my question is, I mean, do you have any examples or ideas right now in terms of anti-displacement policy that would look like? To me, I tend to think that if we allow building a lot more homes and sort of provide some balance in the marketplace, that that in itself is an anti-displacement policy. And so I'm just curious what you're looking at and what some of those might be.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for that point, Council President. I really appreciate that. So I, the, the Commerce Guidance provides a whole section on anti-displacement policies. And so we, we've been sprinkling them throughout. Things like looking at short-term rentals, you know, land trusts. I'm kind of blanking on, on the full list of them. But we have been incorporating them throughout all of the priorities. And this one is, I guess, a call to try to expand more research into, into practices that have worked in other cities. I think one of the ways, and one of the things I've been reading is for anti-displacement is while we want to provide housing for all, the same policy will not necessarily work for all. And so being aware of the data, being aware of the histories and, you know, being intentional with policies that either, you know, are, address racial equity, economic equity, that are intentional with that framework is one of the biggest ways to get at, at just building a more equitable housing market or housing, housing programs. And so that's what I, as far, as far as the city side. So that's why, you know, we have on here, utilize the racial equity framework. And we've been talking with Alex on, you know, efforts that the council is doing. And so I think that there's still a lot to explore there with the city as far as what that could even look like. It's something that our, our partners have mentioned. And then again, just noting that as we're going through the Housing Action Plan, one of those things is trying to identify which policies would help support or which strategies would help support an anti-displacement perspective. I think building more houses alone won't get at it necessarily, because they could all be very expensive houses, or there could be one kind of house. So there is hope that the discussions around housing options, housing supply, moving middle housing can get there. But I, I think that in cities that are trying to address that, it has to be coupled with programs that help support that as well.
No, I appreciate that. And I'm not talking about just building houses, you know, single family, but a whole mix of various housing options that would help balance the marketplace. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments, questions on this section? All right. Looks like you have time to get to section four.
Okay, great. I will go back to my screen. All right. All right. So the last one, leveraging regional partnerships to support housing initiatives. And again, as we've been saying, that many of the priorities and strategies will require and encourage partnership with organizations, developers, advocates, other stakeholders. So again, that will be sort of referenced throughout the plan. But we wanted to find a way or highlight a couple of different things that have come up that highlight the broader discussions around housing, how it connects with other topics, and how the city could further participate and support discussions on the regional housing market. And so I showed this diagram a bit more and just wanted to bring it back. As we move into discussions around actions and develop the Housing Action Plan, thinking about the many different factors of the housing market. We talked a little bit about that just previously. And then trying to focus on what the city can do to encourage, again, our goal of development of additional affordable market rate housing, as well as preserving current housing affordability. And so this is coming from the Department of Commerce Guidance. And a lot of it is speaking to the development regulations about managing design and characteristics, codes, zoning standards, housing options. That is a very tangible way that the city can really support that. There's also areas around incentives, promote housing types in greatest need. And I think we've talked about that, not just in housing types, but in certain areas within the city. And then also directing financial assistance that will help support the lowest income segments. And then programming, which is what a lot of work we've just talked about as well. So just wanted to remind us that, you know, we will try to keep that bend on what local government can do within this larger housing market. And then I also want to just quickly, before we get to the, the strategies here, share some recent data from the National Home Builders, National Association of Home Builders. And they have a Home Opportunity Index that attempts to answer how affordable homes are in a certain metro area. And so this is defined as the share of homes sold in a, in a certain area that would have been affordable to a family earning that, the local median income. And so the higher the number, the greater opportunity to buy a house at the median income. And so you can read this by, if you look at the national one, on the far right, a household with a hun, an income at 100% AMI could afford 58% of houses sold in the last quarter. And then for Spokane, they could afford 64% of houses in the last quarter. So we know that we're experiencing growing affordability challenges. And we hear often, and, you know, in our, in our own process and in the survey, that Spokane is becoming increasingly unaffordable. And this is, this is true. This is a true experience, not disputing that. Just wanting to look at Spokane alongside other areas and see that when looking at housing, at housing costs and income, while, while we are experiencing challenges, we still see that Spokane is affordable, more affordable compared to some of our other areas.
Maran, do we have this data for 10 years ago or 15 years ago? Because I, I think what I'm struck by in the time that I've been here, although mostly anecdotally, is that we used to be super affordable and that, so we might be coming closer. But I'm just wondering if our decline in affordability is steeper than some of these other markets. So it'd be helpful to know that, because I think that's really the cognitive dissonance for people. In, in reality, that, you know, their parents could afford homes and they literally can't, even with, almost with college degrees, they can't. So just wondering if we have that or can look for it.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. And I can look, we can add that, certainly within the last decade, there's been trends up and down, and we can look a little bit longer period too.
Maran.
Candace, go ahead.
Oh, yes. This is such a great graph. And I can't wait to share it with my Realtor friends and with governmental affairs folks, because this tells the story. And, and why Spokane, I think, is so hot right now. Because when you compare to all these cities that we often compare ourselves to, you see how much more affordable it is in Spokane than the rest of the country and other big cities in, in Washington State and then neighboring Boise. And I, I really would like to see how this has changed over the last 10 years, like Council President was saying, because I think that's why we're feeling it right now. Because it is, in a way, we're so underpriced that we're catching up. And, you know, I think eventually we'll settle, maybe closer to the average, or maybe not. This is a great story to tell. And I, I love this graph. It really shows where we sit. And the whole, I've heard lately, a lot of concern that we were losing out to Idaho or other areas. And I think it's just, this is a different story. This is the actual data. So thank you so much for this.
Yeah, absolutely.
In my.
Yes.
One thing, if, if you are able to pull some additional data on this together, looking backwards, I'd also be interested to see what the median income is in each of these jurisdictions as well, since that's what this is based on.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so the last priority, leverage regional partnerships to support, to support housing initiatives. So again, this is speaking to sort of building, continuing to build on external partnerships and, and broader conversations around housing. You know, we've connected with a lot of stakeholders in health, education, transportation, parks, organizations that talk about different amenities and support housing and quality of life. So continue to do that. There's also a lot of data that these different organizations have that can be really important when talking about housing and looking at housing strategies. And then we know that there's effort and discussions about an ongoing housing stakeholder group. Not really saying what exactly that would look like, but just acknowledging that there is a desire to have more regular discussions around housing and try to connect to the regional discussions as well. And then also supporting, continuing to support growth management plans. So that is it for, for this one.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just one, one comment, I think, is in terms of regional partnerships, conversations. I really think there should be some component regionally at GMA Steering to talk about some of these issues. You know, in a meeting we had earlier today, I pointed out that in 2015, our land quantity analysis said that we could handle about 35,000 new units. And to date, we've only built about five, not even 5,000 of those. And so just making sure that we are, you know, focused on those, those population projections and trying to accommodate the, the growth that's coming, I think, should be a, a part of, of this broader conversation.
Councilmember Mom.
Maran, I want to go back to the equity one. Something dawned on me, because I just felt like it was both the last two, there's just, they're, they're so housing centric without the other key economic piece, which is transportation. And I'm really thinking about the disability community. It's so critical. I know so many people who have a disability or, you know, they're, they are dealing with a wheelchair or something. They absolutely have to be near transit. And they choose housing near transit for that reason. And they have this interdependency with it. And I, I really think it, it goes to the affordability of housing. So I'm wondering if there's any way we could add to these draft strategies that ties it to transportation in some way, to get to that equity piece.
Yeah, absolutely. Great point, and something that has been, I think, discussed at the roundtables as well. So we can take a look back and, and try to be more intentional with that.
I don't know if that's 34, under 34.
Yeah, we could find a, a way to wrap it into here or reflect it into either of the other previous priorities as well.
Because, and, and Betsy, I know, or Councilmember Wilkinson, you know far more about this industry. But I, I do know group homes and. But I do know group homes and workforce, it's really important that they have that connectivity with transit. And, you know, it's just, there aren't a lot of opportunities. Sometimes I know people who are trying to open something up right now, but it is so far, what they can afford to put, where they can put it, is so far flung, they're not going to be able to have that workforce delivery and access.
Councilmember Maureen, that's absolutely right. In a special needs community, transportation, transportation is probably the most talked about thing, access to work and social opportunities, and being on a bus stop, or they have to have pair of transit, which then is not affordable because of the cost of that. So it would help us integrate. But I'm also thinking about transportation, it's really, it is the thread through all of our strategies, because, you know, transportation trends are changing, and are we really taking that into consideration? Whether it's electric or bicycles or just walking, I think that's a point we have to keep in front of us.
Thank you.
And I'll just chime in, it's also a way to mitigate rising housing costs, because it costs thousands and thousands of dollars just to have a car, not even talking about the car payments, just the insurance, fuel, maintenance. And if you could go from a family that has two cars to only one, you're saving a lot. And if you went to zero, because you're on a high-performance transit and you can get to work and shopping and all your services without a car, that just gives you more money for housing or anything else. And we're starting to imagine that with our high-performance transit. I mean, we're getting closer to it. I don't think we're there, but once the Central City Line is there, and maybe that division line, that's going to open up housing opportunities for thousands of people who won't have to have a car. They could still choose to have one, but they wouldn't have to, so. Other comments, questions on this? All right, so it's a good season of the year to hunker down and write, Maureen. So we're looking forward to that draft. And I see Terrell there, who's also been a big part of this, and other people from your department, so thanks so much for that. And with that, we'll let you take your leave. And then now, Alex, I'll call you back up to the virtual podium, and I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Council President and Maureen, for filling in for me there for a few minutes. So thank you for having me here again. So we wanted to talk about our equity training curriculum, and kind of, I just wanted to give a little bit background on how we got here. In October, November, we created a work group made of legislative aides and some council members, Councilmember Wilkerson and Stratton, that kind of talked about what we needed when it came to training, what we've had in the past, and then also what's the best way to kind of deliver it. And we met with, and also we wanted to make sure that it was made by the local trainers, the local trainers were here, and we could localize a lot of the examples once we go into the training. So we heard from multiple organizations, and that's how we landed with a partnership with Better Health Together, Just Lead, and Washington State Center. And, you know, I think it's important to have these conversations and these trainings so we can better understand the impacts of disparities and racism that are being experienced in our community. And with that, I'd like Hadley to kind of introduce herself, and then also kind of high-level overview of the proposed training.
Yeah, happy to do so. Hello, everybody, on this beautiful snowy day. It's great to be presenting to you all. My name's Hadley Morrow. I use both they and she pronouns. I wear many hats in this community, mostly today I come to you with my hat on as Director of Equity and Engagement for Better Health Together. I'm also an executive committee member on the NAACP Spokane, and then also the Vice President of the Board for NAMI Spokane, which is our local chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Throughout my lots of work, I've been able to really dabble and get very connected to folks in Spokane who are leading in equity work, especially in developing equity trainings and curriculums, both with a localized lens, but also with the goal of let's build capacity in Spokane, to continue to have these conversations and lead in this very important conversation. Better Health Together is charged with helping transform the healthcare system within Eastern Washington. And within that, we recognize we couldn't really do that unless we were addressing the spaces where systemic inequities were the real barrier to people improving their health. In that, we developed a ton of resources, which include assessments, training, a technical assistance bank, which is full of local experts on equity and anti-racism that folks can connect to to get support, and overall just convening for equity-based work in Spokane. Last year, we introduced a training called Equity 101, which Alex and a number of city staff were able to attend, which was really meant to be the introduction for an organization that's moving into the space of, we need to figure out how to talk about equity as part of the work that we do, and start to learn how to practice and have those conversations in a way that recognizes they're not going to be comfortable, but we need to grow our ability to have them. So what Better Health Together offers, and what was laid out in the proposal for you all, is really a three-stage process to kick off an equity journey, starting with an assessment. It's an organization-wide assessment that we would hope all council members and all relevant staff would be able to complete, that's based off of key activities you would hope to see happening and really see with your eyes, within an organization that's working to promote health equity, so, and equity in general. So that might include things like related to HR, how data is being used and disaggregated, overall how comfortable people are talking about race and gender, ethnicity within the workplace. It's a quick survey, it actually only took an average of 11 minutes for people to complete, so it's an easy ask, but it gets us a touch point on some of the spaces where city might be performing really well and have some strengths, and some spaces where there's opportunity to look, and it maybe prioritizes some changes. We use that assessment to sort of help coordinate what we include in our Equity 101 training, which would be Phase 2. Generally, the training is offered in a 10- to 12-hour session overall. You know, back in the good old days, we used to be able to accomplish that in person, and give everyone a really good lunch and lots of coffee and snacks, and pull through. In the virtual world, we're finding it's far better to spread it out in smaller chunks so that people, you know, are able to absorb it. It's more like two to three hours at a time in front of the screen with breaks over the course of a few weeks to make sure that people have enough time to retain and process the information, but also not too much time is passed in between that folks have forgotten. That training curriculum is outlined a little bit in the document I shared, so happy to run through that a little more quickly and take any more specific questions. But really, the goal of the training is to start with looking at what do we all understand about sort of culture and how culture works, how culture influences our behaviors, how it influences the systems that we work within, and the policies that govern the systems that we work within, and how we start to identify sort of our own personal culture and where that differs from others. Where that then leads to implicit bias, which is a natural risk in all human brains, it's part of what allowed us to survive and get to this point. However, it does create a risk that sometimes we might be running to snap judgments or making assessments that are unfair based off on not enough evidence and unreasonable evidence. From that, we start to talk about racism and the systems of oppression that are really built from some of those roots of implicit bias and culture that are now influencing our system in a very negative and harmful way towards people of color and other impacted populations, such as queer identities, folks who have had homeless experience, been in and out of jail, folks who have foster care experience and other, like, lived experience that has sort of pushed folks to be otherized in our society. And then we're talking about racism, we got to talk about what's the actor? Racism is a symptom, it's not a cause. The cause is really looking at where that culture has influenced racism, and that's where we're sort of going to look at that stage four, looking at white nationalism. I think that feels important to talk about in today's climate right now, and recognizing that, you know, it's really front and center in the news, and we've had some incidents in Spokane, you know, have started to arise in that. There's a lot of evidence and models across the nation for cities that have looked at policies or practices that can either help enable white nationalism to rise, or help prevent any sort of group that's motivated sort of in a mode of supremacy, or cultural bias, or hate speech. And so for that part, we've invited Western State Centers, it's going to be Kate Vick, Biff, and Megan, I'm forgetting her last name, but one other trainer coming in, because they really are regional experts on white nationalism and some of those policies and practices. And I also bear asked to mention, Just Lead is the other group that we're working in close partnership with. Michelle Brown is going to be supporting the training for a deeper dive on racism, and really talking about some of the local implications. And we thought it'd be nice to do a little bit deeper dive on some of the justice system in Spokane and some policies related to that, and that's an expertise of Just Lead. BHT likes to convene other trainers and work together. Our 101 is a nice base to start out the conversation, but it's only starting the conversation. So Phase 3 would really be that in the last day of the training, our team helps to work with you to develop some sort of action steps and goals. Where would you really like to focus your equity journey next? And also, what connections can we make for you to start to lead to, continuing to grow and deepen this, your expertise in this work? It's never a one-and-done training, equity journeys are lifelong, so we're hoping that with this Equity 101, we can really set you up for success to keep on moving. That's sort of the run-through, happy to take any questions at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Hadley. It's good to, I don't think we've met before, so it's great to meet you virtually, looking forward to that. Do people have questions at this point? Councilmember Wilkerson, or comments?
Not too much a question, but a comment.
Yeah.
And when I came on council, we were starting to throw the words around equity and inclusion, and we're looking at our budget with an equity lens, and I would say, do you guys know what an equity lens is? And it was just saying it, and we did not have a unified consensus of what that work was and what that actually looked like. So instead of being cohesive, it was starting to be divisive. And so I'm glad that we are going down this road of how that really affects the people in Spokane, and it really starts at the top. So I look forward to it, I've admitted, I have my own biases, and it is a journey, but I think as leaders, we need to take it and continue it, and we're really hoping the administration will come along with us.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on that. The way, my understanding of the structure is that there's going to be part of this training where we'll all be on a screen like this, it'll be facilitated, there'll be conversation, but a lot of content delivered. That will be public, open public meetings, because we'll all be there, but there is going to be a component where we go into private breakout rooms, where there's no more than three council members, and that will be more private, so people can really dig in deep and have courageous conversations with each other without worrying that it's going to be on the five o'clock news. So both of those components are included, we tried to figure out how to do that, so. Other comments or questions? All right, well, Hadley and Alex, that's totally what I was looking for, so the people just had a little bit of a preview before they showed up at the training coming up. Alex, when's our first training?
So I think we have our first training scheduled for March 12, so on Friday.
Okay.
I know, I look forward to my Friday afternoons as well.
Yeah.
So I apologize. But yeah, just to add to that last note that you were saying, Brianna, yeah, we do want to make sure that we are creating a safe space for us to be able to take deep and get in uncomfortable situations, conversations, and be able to talk to each other about these topics, so, yep.
All right, any other questions or comments for the good of the order? We're done a little early, I guess I'll give a preview, I, well, I'll give a preview of next week, but first, I'm just opening up, any other questions or, okay, great. So I did want to say, I think it's next week, we're going to talk a little bit about council meetings and Phase 2, and what people are thinking as far as coming back to open public meetings and things like that. So I wanted to create some space to talk about that next week, and we'll send out something by email from Council President's office and Hannah Lee's office about technology and different things that we can or are going to have difficulty doing and things like that. But just be thinking about that, so for next study session next week, we're going to talk about that, so. Other than that, I will deliver you all to, as Hadley says, a beautiful day, especially now that the snow has stopped falling, it's just beautiful out there, and have a great week. We are adjourned.[1791.23][1791.23]